Okay, good afternoon. I apologize. It is thirteen oh three, starting a few minutes late, but uh let's open this session. I get to hit Commissioner Weaver on the head. And first up is Mark Ripper. Let's talk about a grant application for broadband.
Sure, Commissioner. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, um I've come before you today, um had to come at the last minute because we just received this application yesterday. Two weeks ago, I was before the board with two of these grant opportunities from Comcast. I am happy to, at the time, I did not know whether Comcast was going to commit or not. I am happy to report that I got an email from them today saying they are committing to both of those projects. So those applications will go in. And we have another one of our businesses in Carroll County, Quantum Internet, has decided to file for an application. And that is what I'm before you here today. We are requesting the permission to submit an additional grant application to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the expansion of existing broadband networks. And in this case, we're going to be using Quantum Internet Services. I think that may be incorrect on the briefing paper you have. It might still say Comcast, but it is Quantum. This project is for eighty homes and eighty businesses located in the rural area of Manchester and Westminster. It is between Sullivan and Freitinger Mill Road. And they are asking for a twenty-five thousand dollar county match on this one. They will be covering the other rest of the fifty percent, and they will be requesting a hundred and eighty-nine thousand from the state.
That is great news. Okay, who do you want to hand it off to, Mark, if anybody?
Um unless you have any questions, I have Carol Schalberg here. She did not unfortunately have a whole lot of opportunity to review this either. We were both surprised at noon yesterday when this request came in. But I have to give great kudos to the grants office. They were absolutely spectacular in helping us pull together. This pulled us together very quickly. I thank Commissioner Lance for his assistance with this because it was really totally and completely unexpected. So, but you're right, it is great news. And what'll happen is is they'll go in with the other two grants, and then we'll see what the state awards. It'll be about two to three months before we know what the awards are.
Okay.
And and like the last one, we will have to cut, if they, if they are awarded the grant, we will have to come back through you, just like we do with the other two. If they get awarded and ask you to transfer the money. Again, we had over seven hundred thousand dollars in the account. So this twenty-five thousand dollars is is not going to affect anything in the big picture.
So now that Comcast and Quantum, can we start sharing with folks that this happening and whoever else is out there is going to jump on board? And uh, you know, participate, all the other providers, or is that the?
Actually, the other providers are aware of this. They're also aware of the Ardoth grant. At this point in time, the one other local provider that we have has chosen not to do this this year. This is the second year in a row that the state's done this program. But yes, we will be doing, you know, as time goes on, be doing press releases and all, and of course, keeping the public up to date with where things stand and when they get awarded.
Fantastic. Commissioner Lance, comments?
Now, Mark, one thing you might want to bring up is the fact that, you know, we're probably not going to get all these grants. And if 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 one of these goes, one of the other ones might not go. But as we discussed yesterday, I think it's important to put in for as many as we can and then see what what uh what comes out in the wash. So I applaud, I applaud Quantum for wanting to jump in here. And I would just say that, you know, I've been hearing some discouraging comments about some of the the actions that Comcast has taken over the recent few days. So, you know, when you need, when you're the only game in town, it it's, it it makes things interesting. But Quantum's jumping in here, and I applaud them for that. So I think this is a good thing. And we'll see. You know, Garrett or Halter could get thrown out of the mix as a result of this, but I I think it's important to get as many folks in as we can.
Right. Yeah, I agree. Anybody else?
I just think this is great value for our money. We're only counting match of twenty-five thousand. We're going eighty homes and eight businesses for that. That is tremendous. That's really, that's really great. It's a big, big step.
Now, is the intent again going from all the way to the house and not just to the point on the road?
Yes, Commissioner, and we did verify that with Comcast as well, that Comcast is building all the way to the home. And Kevin would be doing the same thing, all the way up to the house.
Does this now, there's also homes in the Ag Preserved areas, which have very long distances between the road and the homes. These homes, we're not including any of that in this, are we?
Not that I'm aware of, Commissioner, no. I don't think any of the, any of the these builds meet those requirements.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I just, I had the conversation at the Ag Board this past week, and I talked about what you were able to accomplish, shared last week. This is great news. I mean, they're very appreciative, but they also highlighted the concerns of some of the very large parcels in our preserved lands, getting from road to homes. And I know, Dick, you're well aware of that, I would imagine.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yep, so. Anything else? Please.
That, since this is skipping along the edge of my district, I would like to move that the Board of Commissioners, Office of the Department of Technology Service to submit application for the FY twenty-one expansion of existing broadband network grant authorized to use county money for the match and accept the awards.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Really appreciate all the work, Mark, you're doing on this and the entire team. Thank you so much.
And we, and we appreciate your support, Commissioners, and your playing an important role in helping us accomplish these things.
Any further discussion for the group? Any questions? Hearing seeing none, all in favor? I got five thumbs up. Fantastic. Let's move on.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a good day.
Yep. I believe Jeff should be getting on to talk about solid waste enterprise fund, financing, option system, benefit charge, or SBC. If I see you, I see Eric. Is that who we got? We actually got the brains of the team? Oh, then there's Jeff. Okay. So who's taking this on? Jeff, you leading it off?
I believe Jeff is. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So I believe Jeff is, okay, there he goes.
Yep. Thank you. So today I'm here with Deputy Director Eric Prudon and Bureau Chief Cliff Engel to present a on solutions for balancing our fund balance. Like many of our services and county government, we provide for our citizens. We were unable to charge a gate fee high enough to cover the past fifty years to current of our landfills, nor the expenses in the regulations to come. And yes, there are many pieces of legislation that's in an apples currently that will impact our solid waste fund greater than we have seen in recent years, even with the recycling market. So there's a lot we want to keep an eye on. So today we're here because the board gives direction to provide a solution to resolve the general fund transfer into the solid waste fund. After consulting industry experts and reviewing recommendations from Solid Waste Advisory Council, we're here to present our findings. Let me pass this along to Cliff Engel for our presentation to the board today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you all very much for having us before you today, and since it's my first one since January first. Happy New Year to all. Again, throughout the last year, staff and the board have discussed many facets of the solid waste enterprise fund. Most recently, how can we address the fund's financial sustainability going forward? As you know, our fund operates in a deficit each year, and that deficit is covered through a general fund transfer. A primary goal of our evaluation has been to identify what options are available to eliminate that general fund transfer without reducing services and without reducing, I'm sorry, without reducing services we provide to residents and businesses in the county or negatively affecting operational performance or regulatory compliance in our facilities. And as we discussed previously, given that we are predominantly a waste transfer operation and have been since nineteen ninety-eight, without a dedicated revenue source to offset the increased cost, the solution, as we've mentioned before, is not on the expense side of the equation, given our current model. There it goes. Okay, our county obligations, basically, the state of Maryland has long recognized that having plans and systems in place at the local level to effectively manage public health, and that includes solid waste, water, wastewater systems, which we're all familiar with, is beneficial to all state residents. Therefore, the state has codified these requirements with solid waste-related sources presented on the slide. And basically, those two are Maryland Code Title Nine, which is the environment article, says each county must have a plan for water sewer solid waste, acceptance and disposal facilities. And also Maryland Code Title Twenty-Six, Department of the Environment, that requires the county to have a comprehensive plan in place to adequately provide throughout the county the following facilities and services, solid waste disposal systems, acceptance facilities, a systematic collection and disposal of solid waste, or some combination thereof. And that administrative history dates back to well before nineteen eighty-five. In fact, there are some references all the way back to nineteen seventy-one. Our program, as it is today, has evolved over time to meet those ongoing change, all the ongoing changes from regulatory standpoint and challenges that we faced here at the local level. Okay, the table shown on this side, Slide Three, basically summarizes each solid waste fund category and our draft projected fiscal twenty-two expenses. And I say draft because estimates are always in flux at this stage of the budget process, so some of them, some of them may change mildly along the way. Our solid waste fund and solid waste fund budget reflects that we are again primarily a waste transfer operation since nineteen ninety-eight with approximately eighty-five thousand tons forecast to be transferred in fiscal twenty-two. If you recall, recently, we were transferring less to try to save money for other things. We are in our budget thirty thousand tons of transfer, I'm sorry, of landfill this year. And then that number decreases with the eighty-five thousand tons transferred in fiscal twenty-two and beyond. What that does is it further conserves our landfill airspace and extends landfill life. In summary, for fiscal twenty-two, we're estimating expenses of approximately eleven point six million dollars. And that's again, fund wide. And that's versus tip fee revenue of approximately eight point three million dollars, which resort, which results in the shortfall shown for fiscal twenty-two projected of three point three million dollars to be covered by a general fund transfer. One thing as a side note, I would like to mention is that three point three million with approximately ninety-five thousand tons of trash that crosses the scale, that comes out to be thirty-five dollars a ton. So if there's any discussion or thought about what we would have to raise our tip fee to in order to just try to break even, it would be additional thirty-five dollars a ton, which would take us up to about a hundred a ton if we desire to make the deficit up solely by raising tip fees. And there are many, many challenges that would be associated with that. We did try that approach in the past, and the results were not good.
Mr. Engel, can you elaborate on the results were not good?
Waste, we have, waste went away from the facility. So although we did increase our tip fee, we lost tonnage. And if you increase your tip fee, and that was only if I, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was in the low seventies, a ton at that time. More waste went away than was the, with revenue that was made up by an extra, by the higher tip fee. So we ended up further behind just by raising the tip fee up into the seventies. And there's no reason to expect that the same result wouldn't happen again, especially if we raise the tip fee significantly. So that's one of the reasons we say this is not necessarily a solution on the tip fee and or tip fee side of the of the equation. Along the way there also, from fiscal twenty-two to twenty-seven on the slide, you see the increases in the projected deficit. That's because of items that we're budgeting, making sure that are in the budget as we potentially open new cell area, replace equipment that is aging, and replace infrastructure that is aging. So we're trying to make sure that we are budging, bud budgeting accurately and transparently. So the question is, that's where we are. The question is, what's next? These are just some of, this is just a highlight of a few of the projects that are going to be required in the next few years. You'll see again, these costs included in the future years, operating and CIBP budgets as appropriate. And again, our goal is to budget realistically going forward. In fiscal twenty-two, or possibly the beginning of fiscal twenty-three at the latest, we're going to have to open the next portion of Cell Three, which fortunately is already constructed, but right now is not utilized. The design and construction costs to get into that area is going to be about two hundred thousand dollars. And that's based on prior similar projects. Because we'd be opening additional cell area, we'd be have, we'd have more leachate, so there will be added leachate treatment costs of over three hundred thousand dollars annually. Excuse me. And that also at that time will require at least one full-time employee worth of hours in order to address that that hauling. And we have transfer station floor repairs coming down the line that are going to be in excess of likely a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And again, that's based on prior project, prior similar projects at the transfer station. It's a concrete floor in a very bad environment, or excuse the the slide hiccup there. And it does take a toll. The operation takes its toll, and that floor needs to be, will need to be repaired. Stepping ahead a little bit or looking ahead a little bit, as Cell Three would then be filling up in fiscal twenty-seven or later, depending on what our disposal versus transfer tonnage ratio is, at some point in time, we would need to construct Cell Four. And Cell Four is permitted. But that's also where the transfer station sits. It's also where our residential waste drop-off area sits. So if we were to construct Cell Four, we would require a new transfer station to be located. We don't know if we have the room on site for that or not. It would also require a new residential waste drop-off area to be constructed. The design permitting and construction costs associated with those projects, depending on how far out they are, estimated to be at least fifteen million dollars, likely greater. Up from a perspective standpoint as to how much time we would have until these things need to be done, in Cell Three, our existing life in the currently built cell, if we were to have continued to dispose of forty thousand tons a year, it's six years. And that may sound like a lot, but that comes, you know, time comes really quickly in this industry. However, at the ten thousand ton budgeted figure going forward, it's twenty-seven years. So depending on what we do and how we do it, there is a wide range of impact to what our future schedule would be at the facility or need to be at the facility. So as that, as we mentioned before, we've talked about and been directed to look at opportunities to to eliminate the general fund contribution. As Jeff had mentioned, these were opportunities or options that were evaluated by solid waste advisory committee and others. Also, the studies that have been done in the past. And one of the most realistic options would be institution, development institution of what's called a system benefit charge or SBC. And you'll see some familiar information here because we have discussed these just to a degree in the past. But a system benefit charge basically is a service charge which can cover a portion or all of the reasonably anticipated capital and operating costs for processing and disposal of solid waste recycling. That's very similar definition to what one of the other counties in Maryland that has this program in place. So that's where that comes from. What can a system benefit charge cover? The column on the left, it could be something very, very basic. It could cover just the general fund contribution. Keeping in mind that that general fund contribution is already on everybody's tax bill. So this is, this is a a contribution from the property owners that's already being done and has been done every year that we've taken the general fund contribution. An SBC can cover fixed operating costs, which could be cell, could be recycling programs. It could cover other specific programs beyond that. It could cover tip fees, again, depending on what's put together, cover some tip fees for different waste streams. It could cover all tip fees if we decided that was the direction we wanted to go. It could also be put together to fund future capital and infrastructure, which right now we really do not accumulate or do not save for the future construction of the facility. An SBC could also be formulated to cover the entire solid waste enterprise fund. So not only landfill operations, but, excuse me, transfer operations, administration, closure, post-closure, everything that falls into our fund. The sources for an SBC could be several different types of properties. And again, these vary based on the program. Improved residential properties, which again, every property in the county today is contributing a portion of their taxes towards this operation. We'll cover that here shortly. It could be improved commercial and industrial properties. That's very common in other counties that have these programs. It could be all improved properties. So now you're looking at including agriculture and other group properties. Or it could be all properties in the county, even those that are not not developed. Excuse me. What we've done in looking through all of the options, especially what other counties do, and looking through what what we could possibly do is we wanted to look at providing at least two model examples at a, at a particular depth discussion of what this SBC could look like. And again, I've mentioned it before, it's already part of everybody's property tax. Before we get into that, just what is that amount? Well, at the three point three million dollar projected shortfall for fiscal twenty-two, it's approximately seventy dollars per county property. So approximately seventy dollars in everybody's tax bill will actually be coming towards our our operations. A system benefit charge would simply call out that as a separate line item on the tax bill, so it could be reviewed. It could be understood by everybody that it applies to. If we were to only do a conversion of the of the general fund transfer, waste and recycling tip fees would remain the same. A system benefit charge, that SBC would be adjusted regularly based on the projected deficit. And again, it could apply to either a flat or as a flat rate per residential property, flat rate per residential and commercial or industrial property, or some combination thereof. So this is presented as really, again, the basic low end or entry level SBC model, for example. On the, next, we want to look at an example of the, that's at the other end of the spectrum. And that would be a system benefit charge that covers all solid waste enterprise fund operations, operations and expenses. As I mentioned, there's a lot in the middle. It's kind of like an à la carte menu, but we're looking at the two ends of the spectrum. In this example, before we get into the slide, the the estimated SBC range would be somewhere between, again, depending what's in it, hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred and seventy dollars per property per year. It again, would cover all solid waste enterprise fund operations and costs, but it would also cover, and again, fees for service from that perspective, it would eliminate household solid waste tip fees. So trash that is normally put at the curb from a residential property would be covered. There would be no tip fee for that if that resident hauled it in directly. And if they have a service company collecting it or hauler collecting it, they should not be paying for the disposal. It should be simply for the service of picking that material up.
Can I stop you for a second?
This program would also, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for you. You said the system benefit charge or fee would be about seventy dollars for all properties to cover it about the three point two million dollars or something that that the shortfall is that we're covering right now, right?
Correct. Again, that's just an estimate, sixty to seventy.
All right. And what did you just say that the fee would be to cover all of it, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy?
Hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy dollars. Again, it's a range.
Then you're looking at four times the amount. You're looking at almost twelve million dollars. So how can double the amount cover four times?
Again, depending on what is included in with it, our our total budget's projected to be eleven-six. There are other things that go into there that have been, I don't want to say, you know, unfunded, but bringing our closure, post-closure accruals to the level they need to be. We, what we need to do down the road for closure of the facility, capping the facilities. All of that is in that that estimate. Again, we're trying to just give a a window of each of these examples.
Well, I understand that, but if, I don't know, okay, go ahead. It just doesn't seem to make mathematical sense that you double something and then pay, and is actually paying for almost four times the amount.
I understand.
Go ahead.
Again, in this scenario too, we would be eliminating recycling tip fee, which was just implemented in January. Tip fees would remain for bulk and construction demolition material, commercial and industrial wastes. Again, these are from particular jobs or from locations that are not generating just a ton or two of waste per year. So we'd not really work being applied to those facilities without, to those jobs without taking tip fee as well. If those, these SBCs are reviewed periodically and adjusted as necessary. And again, the application scenarios would be flat charge for a resident to a residential property or a flat charge to residential and commercial industrial properties. So that SBC on a commercial or industrial property is really their contribution towards making sure that are ensuring that our countywide system is sustainable. But I don't know if I missed a slide or not there. I'm very sorry. Okay. At this point, we can either, we can dig a little deeper into the process. But essentially, at this, what we did as staff really is, let's say, as far as we can go. But the next step really would be, or if this was something that the county wanted to look at, no matter which level of an SBC it is, we would need to engage consultants who are basically, I don't want to say SBC professionals, but the consultants that have developed these plans in the past, up through and including legislation or local legislation that would have to be enacted to formally review our program costs and develop precise models for consideration. We'd also asked that the county attorney, although we believe that everything is in place for us to be able to do this if we so choose, to do another level review of existing code and prepare a briefing on the local steps, legislative steps, if any, for establishing an SBC at the county level. So again, that was, boy, I want to thank you for your time and open the floor to further discussion.
Cliff, any of these costs for for the solid way for NMWDA or SBC, are they included in the, I guess, the dues we pay to be in those?
If I'm not mistaken, and Jeff, Jeff can probably speak to it a little deeper than I can. There are, there are, there are base level consulting services in that. Something like this, though, would really need to be a, some level of a procurement, whether it's through an existing on-call contract that the authority has. But as we've seen in the past with other things, it likely would be less expensive or less costly to us to go through one of their contractors or one of their consultants than it would be for us to try to put this out on the street and handle it ourselves. The authority does have quite a bit of experience as well. So I think there would be value included in that, in that dues for the, again, for the base level of consulting effort on their part, both of which they've already said they are very, very willing to to help us with.
Okay, you know, this covers some of our costs on this. As we're looking at this, what are we doing to reduce the waste? I mean, the waste is still there. And that's the problem, the waste coming in. I was hoping, you know, the two would go together, that we have some plan to reduce waste coming into our landfills or getting rid of it rather than putting it in the ground long term, as well as dealing with the costs of it. Your thoughts?
And and also the transfer, which is the really, you know, the bigger piece of of it all is the transfer cost. And, and also the transfer, which is the really, you know, the, the bigger piece of, of it all is the transfer cost. Yeah, our, our ten-year solid waste management plan, which we, uh, put together internally along with external help. Uh, those, that outlines our steps and our programs. Uh, to not only reuse and recycle, but also reduce waste as well. Uh, much, much of that is outreach to the local communities. It's identifying as many recycling programs, no cost and low cost that we can, uh, and implement those programs. And over, over time, we've done a, a phenomenal job at, at that, especially, uh, being a, a rural, small county. Uh, the programs that we have in place here, uh, would make many bigger counties, larger counties jealous. Uh, and that effort continues and, and especially through Maria Myers, our recycling, uh, recycling manager. Uh, who is out and about constantly, uh, trying to hammer those along. Now, there is also, uh, and Jeff may touch on this a little later, but there also is legislation. Uh, that's pending in Annapolis. It's been there in different forums for the last few years. Uh, it's back up again where. There are programs or legislation that may come along for producer responsibility, meaning things like paint. Uh, other types of wastes, uh, where they would not be landfilled anymore. There'd be, well. Depending on how far they would ban it, but they would give opportunities where the, where the producers of those materials. Would be required to take those materials back for recycling or, or other processing. Uh, televisions, electronics possibly. Uh, so there, the state is working on that. On that path as well. Uh, they also have legislation that is looking to. Uh, make it, I guess, establish a deeper recycling department at the MDE. I think that's probably some legislation we could definitely get behind. Because part of their effort is statewide reduction, uh, and reuse. So all of those pieces are in place. And again, we, we, uh, keep our ear to the. Uh, to the, our finger to the wind for, for everything that comes down. It's not going to, not going to cost us a ton of money. And some of the recycling programs that are out there may reduce material going to the landfill, but they could be inordinately expensive. Just I'll throw an example out there, television recycling. It's not that there aren't companies that offer it. But they may be charging ten, fifteen, twenty dollars a unit. To us, to do that recycling. Um, at some point in time, that becomes more cost prohibitive to the department than it does. Uh, than, than the benefit at the other end.
And Cliff, I'll add to that is, uh, some of the things that we've seen too is, you know, some of our surrounding jurisdictions have, uh, some waste of energy. Capabilities to where that's considered recycling. In reuse of those materials. Uh, but one of the, you know, one of the other legislate, piece of legislature. Legislation that's out there right now is, uh, you know, uh, requiring composting for. Um, at least the larger jurisdictions with it eventually going to move forward to a requirement and, um. For the smaller, uh, counties. Which, you know, our county, because of this, you know, we are, we have a lot of agricultural, um, areas. Um, we're not as populated as, as some of the other surrounding counties. We would prob, you know, we've already, we looked in this a couple of years ago, is there's a facility that's looking to be constructed down in Jessup. And yes, we could reduce the amount of material that's coming in to be other transferred or put in the landfill. Um, that's compostable material. Um, you need to develop a, um, a collection system, uh, collection process for that. You also need to haul it to, uh, the facility in Jessup. Um, you know, but that material would probably still have to, you know, would still be charged at a fee. In the hauling and transportation, collection, et cetera, could be running equal to or higher than what our current tip fee is. Um, you know, we're, and we're not looking at this from a cost. We're looking, you know, we understand we're trying to reduce the amount of. Material come physically go, that would be going into the ground somewhere. You know, but we also have to look at, you know, right, you know, the dollar amount, because as we increase recycling. We're, you know, we're paying, you, you know, there's, there's a cost associated with that. Um, is there composting? There's a cost associated with that. Um, these programs, if it's televisions, et cetera. Um, you know, so. In their work, you know, and the state is working toward a, you know, waste, you know, a zero waste type of group to be brought on board to help. Move us forward. Uh, but one of the challenges we've always run into is the size of our county. Uh, because we are a rural county and we're, we're right in that line of rural to, you know. We've always been in that middle zone, kind of like that middle child. We don't have enough material to take on these large projects ourselves to be. To be at the head of what these other areas and counties are. But, you know, we're not, you know, so when, you know, those are some of the challenges we have that, you know. Um, as we're looking into this, but it's, you know, if there's an option out there, we look into it.
And those are initiatives that are under the current administration, uh, at the state level. Uh, somewhere down the road, we'll have a new governor and, and things may change again. Uh, I'm not sure if anyone remembers, but you know, when Governor O-Malley was in office. There was a, uh, basically a landfill ban, no, no new landfills, no new landfill, uh, areas to be designed or permitted. Uh, so that could happen again. Uh, and it's probably likely to happen again at some point in time. Uh, so again, a lot of those initiatives are good. The producer responsibility is, is wonderful, in my opinion. Uh, there's a lot of material that should be, should be placed back onto. Uh, the generator of it or the, the manufacturer of it in order to manage. Uh, so we don't have to, or so the, the residents and businesses don't have to. Uh, it's multiple, multiple answers or pieces to the answer. You know, unfortunately, again, the biggest piece of our discussion, you know, is the fact that we transfer. And I can't reiterate that enough. And if we put everything in the ground, yeah, we'd have, we'd run out of room pretty quickly. Uh, but if we put everything in the ground, there wouldn't be five thou, five million dollars worth of transfer costs. Now, that's a very broad brush statement, but it's, it's generally accurate. Uh, so that, that's where we're dealing with what, where we are today. And where this is the direction we've been driven in. I see Ted lit up.
Can I jump in for a second, commissioners?
Sure.
Okay, um, this is what, I want to go back to something that Commissioner Frazier questioned. I waited a little while to see where things were going, but I didn't want you to go too deep without understanding this. And what Commissioner Frazier, um, questioned the relationship between. A system benefit charge covering the general fund transfer and covering all the costs and why it didn't say to make sense. It's because it's not a good comparison. Right now, the general fund transfer we have planned is not enough to cover the costs that we are projecting. So covering the cost of the existing transfer is easier than covering the cost of. The entire operation. So you really can't compare those two numbers. The, uh, the, I would say the relevant number for you to be thinking about is the second one that Cliff gave you. What you would need to cover the cost of the operation.
Which is at a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy dollars per household?
Per property, yes.
Per property. Yeah, per property, I apologize.
That's okay. And, and you brought up a, a very good point. Uh, that is per property. There are, again, uh, dozens of different ways that something that an SBC can be put together. Uh, it could be looked at per property, again, developed or undeveloped. Uh, it could be looked at as housing unit. Uh, where if you have a, a property may have ten apartments on it. Oh, that, that's different than per property. Uh, and that depth is what would need, what we would need the assistance of the professionals really. Uh, who are familiar with those programs and the development of those programs to be able to address.
I have a real hard time trying to swallow this, that you're selling to us that. It sets off seventy-dollar fee per household or a hundred fifty-dollar fee per household. That's no big deal. But if we roll that into a charge directly linked to the service, that is a big deal. Let me propose this question to each one of our staff members. You live on a fixed income. You make X amount of dollars each year and every year inflation starts hitting. And I see what's coming. Your, your grocery bill starts to go up. What do you all do? You need to feed yourself, but you cut back spending on something else. And I think that's precisely what we need to do. And I keep hearing about the recycling costs. This will do absolutely nothing to solve the problem. Even if we gave you the system benefit charge, couple of years down the road, we're all be out of balance again. What you'll do? Come back and say, we need to increase the system's benefit charge? Until you link the cost to the revenue source, we're always all see ourselves spun in this circle over and over again. I have no problem with cutting spend in somewhere else if we have to and be very upfront with the public about it. Or selling them the fact that this needs to be directly linked to it. I am completely against this concept. Because we'll have to keep coming back every couple of years because all these state mandates, obviously no one paid attention to my speech. And we'll have to find ways to raise taxes to cover this cost again. This is not the solution.
Well, Eric, when the present, presentation, they said they would reevaluate a yearly or whatever said. To make sure that the cost did cover everything. So they don't have to keep coming back to us. That's in, that's in the presentation.
The, the point is, in the future, the cost of recycling will keep going up. And it ought to keep raising this tax over and over again, because the, it is not directly linked to what's driving the inflation and our cost.
What, what, what does that mean? I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to follow, say it one more time, smaller words.
All right. What happens with us is the mandate, the supply all this recycling. It costs more for us as a county to recycle. Right now, I think we're charging, uh, thirty-five dollars a ton for the haulers to dispose of the recycling. It's costing us a hundred and forty dollars. And in the future, you know what's all happening? That cost is all go up again. So there's no.
Responsibility to recycle? Isn't there a mandate?
Precisely, that's it. And precisely, there is a mandate. What I'm saying is, we need to link. That cost or recycling to the users. And we need to sell it to them, explain it to them. I think they'd much easier swallow the fee directly linked to the cost. Than throwing this blanket systems benefit charge across the board. And what's scary for me is when I see all it goes in a general fund. You know what's all happened that fund? The next batch of commissioners will go spend it on something else and then you'd all be short again.
So you, you said users, what users? Users that are recycling?
The, the recycling salt waste, everyone pays their, they pay their hauler to haul away their waste. The hauler drops it off and is paying thirty-five dollars a ton. It's costing us a hundred and forty dollars a ton. So there's a complete disconnect between our cost and what we're charging people to dump the trash all with. I fought in the last budget hearing to at least get the recycling cost at fifty percent like we did with the solid waste cost. At least be consistent in it, but this board was opposed to that and only set the cost per ton of recycling at thirty-five. That's a drop in the bucket of what it actually costs us.
Commissioner, if I may, um, this, this deficit in, um, in the solid waste fund. Is not directly related to, uh, recycling. It started in, uh, the late nineties in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, when the Board of Commissioners at that time chose to transfer waste. Uh, and did not create a revenue stream to pay for that transfer of waste. Um, and at that time, and up until a couple, about maybe five years ago, roughly. Um, recycling actually was a moneymaker for us. And about around in most recent times, the number I remember is fifteen dollars a ton. Uh, might have been more even at one time, and it depends on what kind of recycling you're talking about. So this, this deficit, this problem is not related to recycling now. That doesn't mean you couldn't change recycling tip fees. I just want to make sure that it's clear that that is not the genesis of the problem.
Thank you for elaborating on that, but you made something very clear there. Previous commissioners did not link it to the revenue stream. That is the heart of what I'm arguing about. There's a complete disconnect between the expense and what we're receiving. And I know just like the, the piece you gave me, I'm total agreement. We subsidize all kinds of stuff. But we have to have some sort of balance to keep us in the, in the rails and, and not going so deep in the red. There has to be a connection. And we can pay for other things. We have to cut back on expenses elsewhere. I mean, this is a basic need. And I think this board needs to have the courage to cut back spending on some other things and face this. We, we're at the bottom rung of government. We don't control this. This stuff runs downhill and it's on our back. We need to face it publicly and explain this very directly to the public for that they comprehend and understand this. We need to stop spending money on other things to address this. Because it's a priority and that's a big sacrifice to make. Nobody wants anything cut. I can see what's coming in our budget session. Everybody's got their sacred cows. We need public transportation. We need the veteran shuttle. We know what, we need our public waste disposed of. I think that's more important.
So your solution to this, Erica, I think from what you're saying, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, but your solution is. To cut something somewhere else and use that money to pay for the solid waste fund? Or, because you also talked about direct link between service and use. So, so are you a combination of those two or just cutting something out?
It's, it's precisely, that's the compromise we need to come to. Just like before, when we changed the fees on the solid waste dumping or the tipping fee per ton. We hit the fifty percent more. We did it on all the other fees we charged throughout our system. That, that's something I've championed, I campaigned on, and I, and I thank my colleagues tremendously. For instituting that through building permits and all the other fees we, we have. That philosophy needs to ring through and be consistent throughout our administration. It needs to be applied to this in particular, because this is one of the most critical ones out there. And what we do shortfall, that's the other side. The, the general population funds all that. But it needs to be put in perspective and linked somehow to the expense.
Are you, are you looking at user fees on everything we put in the landfill by the, the user pays for everything?
No, yeah, I think you just missed what I just said. Not for the user to pay everything. But to try to split it down the middle like we do with the labor costs on, uh, permits and stuff for the county. All we're asking for the people that come in for the permit to do is pay for our labor costs. Publicly, the general funding that we receive pays for the other half of it. I just want that basic principle to be applied to this. Because mark my word, and mark it right now, I'll relay this one of yours. If you pass this bill to raise these fees. We're all be out of bounds in the future and this administration, we won't be here. They're all come back the next administration. Locking on our door saying, we need to raise the system benefit charge again, because it has absolutely no connection to the expense.
I think you have something literally in that comment, Eric, that yes, I think down the road, some things will be forgotten. And we're not linked in. And that, that's where it gives back to, I think, the statement I said originally. It's got to be, you know, we've got to reduce the waste here. Uh, coming in somehow or find a way to get rid of it. Uh, you know, even hauling it out, I guess is a way, but I'm not sure it's a good way. Um, if you were willing to make money, we just open the cell up and fill it up in the next five, six years and then. I don't know what we do, but we could make money out of this real fast. Uh, however, our responsibility comes in, we have to provide a way for a waste to be disposed of. I was hoping we had, you know, some, even, uh, I think Jeff was alluding to. Uh, maybe, uh, combined effort between counties, but something's got to start taking place. We've been batting this can down the road for twenty years and we don't have anything yet.
And, and for the sake of Commissioner Wance, we don't want his constituents disposing their waste in his yard, right?
Yeah, well, there's always that. Uh, I, this, this is a great debate. I got a couple of questions. Uh, you know, we talk about Dick, you, you, Commissioner Weaver, you keep talking about, we need to reduce waste. We need to reduce it, need to reduce it. And then. We hear that if we put the tip fees up to a hundred dollars per ton, they take the waste elsewhere. I'm confused. Isn't that reducing? Cliff, I, I don't, I'm, I'm confused on that. And the other question I have is. And I, I might have missed it here because there's a lot of facts and figures and debate, but. You know, right now I'm paying, I don't know, almost three hundred dollars or more, a little bit more than that, a year. To have my trash removed. So what does an SBC do to me?
Yeah, that might be the first, uh, uh, answer to that question. Uh, depending, again, depending on what. Uh, depending, again, depending on what it is, and I'll, with that, I'll, I'll kind of focus on if it was all inclusive. Uh, if you're, if the system benefit charge covers all the expenses, the actual disposal tip fee that you pay your hauler, that goes away, but it's transferred to, essentially transferred to the tax bill to the, via the SBC. If you want to continue to have it picked up at the curb, you'd be theoretically paying your hauler a, just the service charge uh, to have it hauled away, because that hauler would not be paying a tip fee at the landfill by picking, from picking up, uh, you know, county just household trash.
Okay, so my, so my, so my fee would, my annual fee would go down?
It should, because their hauler right now pays a tip fee. That hauler would be coming in, and again, a lot of pieces of the puzzle here. But if a hauler is only picking up residential trash through the county, when that hauler would, would then come to the landfill, they would have no tip fee to pay.
Okay.
It would be, it would still be scaled because we have to do, we have to keep track of records. We have to inspect. So we still have to scale everything. But there would be that, they would not be paying a tip fee. You would be paying it as a property owner, directly through your system benefit charge. Then it's up to, honestly, it's up to the hauler, if they're going to do the right thing and reduce your rate by the equivalent of how much trash you were generating every year.
Okay, so that's, that's where I'm getting confused, Cliff, with this, this argument that, that, or this, not argument, this debate. If, if I as, as a taxpayer in this county am currently paying around three hundred dollars of, a year, and my price is almost going to be cut in half, why would I not want to do that?
Exactly. That, that's kind of where I was going, is, yeah, e- exactly that. What, you, you're saying a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy dollars, I think, is what you wrote down, or I wrote down. And you're saying then we would, everything would be taken care of, all expenses. Why would we not do that?
Yeah, the disposal portion, the tip fee portion, the disposal portion is what's covered by that, not the collection activity. If you decided to become a self hauler, and all your waste, and like many people in the, in the county do, then yes, your three hundred and whatever dollar bill would be reduced to the hundred and fifty to seventy. But you, then you would be hauling your own waste into the landfill.
Right, currently, currently, most people, except for those self haulers, um, pay two fees really, when they pay, um, a trash company to remove their trash. They're paying for the service of picking it up and delivering it to the landfill, and they're paying for the tip fee.
Okay.
So the service charge would remain if you continued to hire someone to remove your trash at the curb. The tip fee portion would be eliminated.
Okay, I, I got that. I'm just, what I'm trying to zero in on is, if that service charge would be reduced by a lot, I've got the potential as a taxpayer here to save money on my trash hauling.
Right.
Which.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, which, which, which is why I'm confused. I mean, I, you know, if the, if, you know, if these, if these haulers, I mean, good grief, if they get twenty-five dollars a household for a service fee, they're gonna probably still make out pretty good, especially out here in the rural areas, because that's a lot of houses that they can get a fee for. So you add that to this SBC, you know, you're saying one fifty, and you know, twenty-five, thirty dollars service fee. Man, I'm, I'm saving a hundred and fifty dollars a year right now. Why would I not want to do that? Or would the service fees be astronomical?
Well, I have to say, that's why I was going to jump in, that depends on your hauler, what he's gonna do with that. Just because he's not paying the same tipping fee, that doesn't mean it's gonna pass all the savings on to the customers. It'd be nice if that happened. And how much of a sa- and how much, you know, how much is he actually saving and all that kind of stuff divided by all the customers? I don't know how it would work out. I'm not a hauler, but don't, it's, it's like trickle down, whatever. Doesn't mean you're gonna get all of that money back. Or they're not gonna charge you that exact mon- that exact amount.
So I think.
That's where you also have the power of the consumer. The consumer has the power to choose. If you're, if you think your hauler is, is shortchanging you that way, then there are other, other haulers out there.
Cliff, I think. It's almost like, it's almost like internet, where there, there's not, you know, when there's one, when there's, when there's only one game in town, what game you gonna go to? But if you've got, if you've got Vance, Vance Weaver Trash Incorporated starting up, and, and we decide to charge twenty bucks a household for a service fee, um, I'm spending a lot less than I am now on trash removal, and it's on my tax bill, and I don't have, and I don't have all those extra expenses. I, 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 I keep going back, I, I need, I guess I need to see it on paper, because I don't under, I don't understand why the average person wouldn't say, oh yeah, I'm in on that one.
Well, I'm doing the driving, Steve. You're doing the pitching. Uh, the other part of it.
Only one is seventy degrees out, Dick. Only one is seven.
We call out of landfill if we get, win something like this, that we keep getting, uh, the tonnage down that we're burying?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I missed the first part of that.
Wouldn't we continue to, uh, haul more out than we're burying in the landfill then? Would there be availability of doing that, or most of it getting hauled out instead of buried, which would extend our life of that, of everything?
Yeah, yeah, again, it depends on what we want, what we, and I say we is not just our department, but the county as a, as a whole, the government staff. Uh, i- it depends on what we, we determine that model to be or decide what we want. Um, yes, i- it's i- i- if, if less is coming in, then obviously less would go out, or less would go out. One of the things to keep in mind, there's, there's two things I want to touch on if it's okay, real briefly. Uh, one was the question earlier about, uh, that was made about putting material in the ground, you know, just put it all in the ground. The timeframes for that, with what, with cell that we have built right now, uh, if we, which you have eight acres left, uh, that are not operational. If we were to put all ninety-five thousand tons, give or take a little bit a year that we, that we accept, uh, into the landfill itself, cell three's, uh, filled up in three years. The entire facility, including cell four, uh, is filled up between twelve and fourteen, and we have nowhere to go. You know, from a landfilling standpoint. So those are some timelines, uh, if we would to keep in mind. Uh, so.
Cliff, one, one question, I mean, because going in the same direction that, uh, Commissioner Wance was going, so I agree. But I don't know what the service fees are, you know? I, I understand anecdotally, we can talk about twenty dollars or, but I honestly don't know. And if we can find that out, what a typical or an average of, uh, service fees are of those that are, uh, you know, out there right now, I think that would also help us understand what the impact is. Um, and then Commissioner Boucher, you were talking about stopping capital projects. I mean, are you going on, stopping capital projects, putting them into the dollars into the general fund? And then transferring still, keeping things the way they are, and transferring money into general fund into this program, or? I, because I mean, you're, you're transferring.
A combination, a combination of the two. Hold off on spending so much money on capital projects when our real capital project is addressing this landfill need. That is a capital project. It's a matter of shifting our expenses around. Just like we as individuals, if we need more groceries, we spend less money on our cable or our cell phone. We have a budget that we're structured inside of. And the one problem, the system's benefit fee, which I keep talking about, you know, if we lock down X amount of dollars, it's still not addressing the expense side through inflation, which will go up. In the future, the system benefit charge will keep going up.
The, um, the capital projects are in line with our priorities of safety and security and, you know, issues that we need to address. They're not, you know, as I mentioned last week, I think in Howard County, building an art center, you know, as a capital project. I don't think we have an art center in design right now. Um, but the projects that we have are to keep ourselves moving. You know, in a direction, they're not, I won't say frivolous, but they are priorities for things to get done. So I'm, I'm hesitant to, to address shutting down a capital project, because here's another priority. There, it's all our priorities, so.
But this capital project is actually smaller than some of those other ones. I think it'd be much more important.
So, so Cliff, back to my first question. I keep hearing people saying, we gotta reduce, we gotta reduce, let's, we, we gotta figure out a way to reduce waste. And you say that if we put the tip fees up to cover the expense, people are gonna take trash elsewhere. Well, isn't that reducing waste?
It i- it is reducing waste. But, uh, you know, Ted might be able to answer this a little better than I can. Uh, it's, you may, i- i- if the tonnage stays the same at ninety-five dollars a ton and you reduce it, or you increase the rate ten bucks, you know, it's nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional revenue on paper, assuming no tonnage leaves. If we were to lose ten or twenty thousand tons because we just increased our rate, or more, then yes, our, our, we have less material to transfer, but we also have less revenue coming in across the scale. So it's a, there's a positive in not, in, in our transfer cost going down. There's a big negative in that we just didn't lose for each of those tons that goes away. We just didn't lose that ten dollar increase, or that thirty-five dollar increase. We lost the whole tip fee. So the piece of that tip fee that goes towards our regular operating cost, that would be there regardless of what we do, that goes away. And we can put a quick, we can put a quick table together to, you know, to share with the group, um, that kind of shows some hypotheticals with that, but that's, that's the problem.
Yeah, w- right, we have set costs for the solid waste. Those set costs don't go away, no matter how many tons we put in there or don't put in there. Those set costs still have to be paid. Therefore, depends on how much, if you, you know, raise up the, the tip fee and we, we lose half the people coming in there, half the trash, yeah, we've lost half. But we cut our revenues in half too. Would, would that be enough to, to, uh, meet our set costs? Oh, I could go back to something Commissioner Wance said, sorry you were talking about. But, um, if I, I don't pay to have my trash hauled. I live in a municipality. I pay my city taxes. Therefore, if you add this hundred and seventy dollar system benefit fee to me, I, I mean, something I would look at, but then I would have to rely on the city to say, you know what, we're gonna reduce your taxes here because of this. I'm not so sure that's gonna work. And that's, and what, twenty percent of the population lives, is within municipalities to do that.
Does, does every municipality charge on their taxes for trash removal? All eight?
I'm pretty sure all eight pick up trash, and therefore it's a part of your, your tax bill, yes.
So then how much are we talking about? How many in the population?
Twenty percent of the county.
So then, so then wouldn't you eliminate those folks from an SBC?
Yeah.
I'm all for it now.
Well, I don't know.
If I'm not mistaken, I'm gonna say, if I could just jump in, if I'm not mistaken, Frederick County, uh, who has a system benefit charge. Now, it applies to, I believe it applies to everybody. Um, it, yeah, you, you are correct. It would mean that the county and the towns would have to have that discussion to make sure that they are give, letting their, their citizens take advantage of the same program, the same way, take advantage of the program, the same way that folks in the, the county proper, uh, would be able to. Uh, one nice thing about it too, though, is, uh, i- if it is on the, on the, uh, the SBC is on the tax bill, that's the county portion of it. Tip fees are covered, that, that should, uh, streamline the procurement process for each of the, the cities and towns. So there is a benefit to them, you know, th- those local governments, uh, to be on board and, and take advantage of the program.
Yeah, with the exception, with the exception of what Dennis is saying, and I, I appreciate that, Dennis, that makes sense. Uh, uh, i- if there's a way that we could work something out with the municipalities, I still ask the question, and no one seems to want to answer it. If I'm paying only half of what I'm paying now, why would I not want to do this?
Because I don't think that's a reality of what'll happen.
Well, okay, so, um, okay, so you want, you're, you're giving me an answer based on your guess.
Why don't we ask the haulers? If this happened, what would they, you're do, what would they do?
Yeah, I'd like.
I think, yeah, and we can do that. Um, I think some of the haulers would be more forthcoming than others, but any information is better than none. But one way to kind of back into it a little bit is, i- if you look at EPA estimates, and again, it's looking at estimates. Each household on average, because really that's what we can, that's only thing we can do is look at averages. Uh, each household, e- each household on average generates between three and four tons of, of trash a year. And on average, one ton of that or a little bit more is recycled. Now, that's lower in our county, uh, from our statistics, but if a household generates three tons of trash a year that have to get managed, that three tons across our scale is a hundred and ninety-five dollars, at sixty-five dollars a ton. Four tons, it would be two sixty across our scale. So one ninety-five for three, two sixty for four tons. So there's the disposal piece. Subtract that from whatever your annual household bill is, there is your service charge. Now, is it accurate? Probably not, but it's definitely in, in the right ballpark.
Yeah, but I think we still need, there's a delta out there, and that's not knowing the service charge from the haulers. Uh, I think having that conversation with, you know, a few of them will definitely help out. And I think, uh, bringing up the point about, um, municipalities is also very important, because twenty percent, you know, of the county or the municipalities, and that's a pretty large chunk, so, um. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at with this. I kind of like where Commissioner Wance, I, I'm not sure why I wouldn't want to do this. It seems like I'd be saving money. Moving forward, but.
Well, that's the case. Everybody's gonna go toward it. It's like you said, we've got to talk to the haulers and find out what their actual service charge would be if they weren't paying tipping fees.
Yeah.
And then. Individual person.
Right.
Right, and it would be just a guesstimate. I'm not, uh, we're, none of us are suggesting that that would happen. But I'm not gonna sit here and debate something because somebody guesses that it won't happen. Do it to me on paper. This is a big enough issue not to be making guesses.
I guess you're right.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree.
Keep guessing on numbers like that, sir, right? I don't know. Maybe not.
We need numbers.
I, I, I think we got a few, uh, things that we need, um, giving you a little bit of direction, you know, gentlemen, to come back to us with some of that, so we can actually put numbers on paper and understand. You know, unless Commissioner Wance and Weaver are starting up their, their, uh, you know, you know, business for twenty dollars, I mean, I, I may just go with that, but I don't know. Um, but I think. I think if we get some.
You're being hired as a count.
It'll, it allows to move forward, because right now I don't think, uh, uh, for me, I'm not prepared to move forward, because I don't know. What numbers?
Right, I think we need to, to talk to the haulers, find out what the service fee would be if there's no tipping fee. But I also like to talk to the municipalities to find out if they were involved in this, and every, all these, their citizens were charged a system benefit charge, because if we made it countywide, I think it would ease the burden on everybody, ease the amount. Um, what would they do? Would they lower taxes? Or, I just, I like to get an idea from what, what their perspective is. Because it would cost them less money too, because they pay tipping fees. And if they don't, if they say, well, we just keep that money because we're gonna need it for this, then okay, then they're not included. Well, I like to have the conversation with them too.
Right, and if I can add to a point is, when we, uh, two things is, um, um, first being is when we did the, um, pilot with New Windsor, uh, who was gracious enough to work with us on that pilot. Um, you know, they do have it separated out with it, they were able to easily separate out when they charge their citizens and their taxes, tip fee, and they have our outside hauler that does all the hauling for them. So they were able to separate that out. Um, and part of the deal was we reimbursed those tip fees back to the citizens that they'd already paid in their taxes, because there was no way for us to make, you know, we, we would have been doing a lot of adjustments on their books. back to the citizens that they'd already paid in their taxes because there was no way for us to make, you know, we, we would have been doing a lot of adjustments on their books. So we have a, we have some experience with that. Um, in, in the second, you know, or I guess there's going to be a third point, but, uh, Commissioner Vance, I mean, I, and, and I understand is when, what we pay every, you know, we pay every year for a hauler to pick up our trash and recycling. Um, the minute, you know, as soon as that fee went up, uh, Commissioner Boucher that we had for $30 a ton, uh, as soon as that was implemented, I got a, I got a notification from my hauler saying, by the way, um, your, your rates just went up every month. Um, you know, because now there's a pay, you know, there's a fee for recycling. So, um, you know, that, they definitely, that's a pass through right to me and I'm already, I'm already paying it. And you know, as everybody's talking about the numbers, um, that's part of, um, I guess on the briefing paper is for us to, you know, we have some theoreticals, we have some data in front of us. And what we're asking the board is the ability to go out to solicit, bring in on a consultant to put these values, put these numbers together, put the scenarios and make sure we're including everything so we can answer these questions for the, for the board of, you know, it's, because you have industrial users, you have the residential properties, you have some undeveloped properties, um, that have to be brought into consideration. Uh, we have some of our county trash, um, that goes to an, another uh, out, uh, a third party here in the county of which we lose some revenue every, every year because it goes to that facility for them to haul out to the same location. We are losing, we lose revenue even when that's not coming across our, our scales, which ups our expenses. So I, I just, that's, just wanted to bring that around.
No, personally, I believe there still needs to be due diligence done by our staff before we reach out and hire a consultant to do more. I think there's some basic, uh, information that we can receive. And then get it out there. I mean, that's, you know, I don't want to waste a consultant's time. I don't want to spend money on a consultant where there's staffing that we can still do, so.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with that, Commissioner Rustine. I also have another quick question, um, Cliff. If, if I'm a person who goes to the dump every other week and I don't pay anybody right now, okay? But now I've got an SBC on my tax bill. So I'm not going to go to the dump anymore because I, 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 I would rather pay a hauler be, or I, I'm going to pay a hauler because I've got that SBC on there. Is there an advantage to cutting down on the traffic there at the, at the landfill? By not having the folks constantly that want to take their own trash out there, going across the scale all the time? Or is that, it, it, that doesn't matter?
Well, I, I don't know. Yeah, I, it's tough to say what percentage of the customers, you know, who self haul right now would, would take advantage of that opportunity. You know, I, I think it would be a great opportunity to stop wear and tear on, on a vehicle and, you know, other things of that sort. But I, I don't know how many people would, uh, would take advantage of that reverse.
Because, I'm sorry, Cliff, uh, but when you, if you haul your own trash, and I don't, but if you don't do, you still pay for the tonnage that you're putting in the, the landfill, don't you? Therefore, if you haul your trash, you're getting a benefit because now you're not paying a tipping fee.
Right. I'm sorry, Commissioner Weaver.
What's the minimum fee you pay just to go across the scales?
$7 up to 220 pounds.
So that's about, if said 50 weeks a year, $350 going, you're paying just to take it yourself.
Correct.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going, uh, Commissioner Weaver, because if you could, if, if you could get these folks and, you know, I had this conversation with one of the Westminster City Councilmen, you know, whenever you talk about the landfill, that's a sacred cow. You know, don't do anything to the landfill because, well, obviously you guys know what happened when we did do something with the landfill. You know what happened out here on all the road. Anyway, um, i- if, if folks could understand that if there is this SBC, oh, but wait, that means you don't have to go to the dump twice a month. Oh, and you're saving $50 a month. Why would I not want to do that?
Well, my last words are this. We all were told as children, if it sounds too good to be true, it's not true.
Well, it's not true. But like I said, I think, um, doing a little bit more homework, a little bit more due diligence on some of the direction we provided. Let's get this back on the agenda, have this conversation.
Need numbers.
Yeah, talk to the haulers, talk to municipalities.
Exactly. Yeah, the haulers, municipalities, you, you got it. Anything else?
So we have the marching orders, we'll certainly do that.
Okay.
Can I get a few comments, last comments?
Is that really not a buzzer to start?
Okay, I, I just wanted to touch on a couple of points that have come up here. Uh, first Commissioner Frazier, uh, ki- kind of said this, but I wanted to say a little different way, maybe everybody will, will get this. The, the enterprise fund has fixed costs and they've got variable costs. If trash goes away, a variable cost to us goes away, but the fixed cost remains exactly where it is. If all of our trash went away, we would still have significant fixed costs. That doesn't change. Uh, Commissioner Boucher said something about the sys- system benefit charge going to the general fund. Just want to make sure everybody understands that is not what would happen. If you were to do this, that money would be contained in the enterprise fund. It would not be available for any other use. And, um, yeah, Commissioner Boucher was talking about the system benefit charge would have to change over time because costs are going to go up. That's true. That's also true. If we continue to pay this with tax dollars, the costs are going to go up and, and that's going to change as well. That's how we go about paying for this, isn't going to change the cost of running this operation. And the biggest thing, I just want everybody to have in your mind as you're waiting for more information. The basic problem we have right now is that there is not enough revenue to cover the costs of the solid waste enterprise fund. And not only is there not enough, that's a problem that is growing with every year. Whether you do this with a system benefit charge or you use tax dollars, we face the same problem. In our current plan right now, the, uh, transfer that's built into your plan is not sufficient to cover the costs. Now we, this is not a someday problem. This is here right now.
Ted, one question. If you were to, uh, downsize, how much would that reduce fixed costs? Now, you can't ask for, uh, right now, but you know, as we, we're not bringing as much through. So you downsize the entire operation, which I know we still have fixed costs. But how, how many less or how we can make it less than what we have, that's, you know, that's a tough one.
Well, Cliff is probably in a better position to talk about this than me, but I don't believe we can downsize in any meaningful way. Yeah, if you're talking about, you know, it's a bit, if you're talking about just less tonnage, you know, meaning downsizing, meaning less tonnage coming into the facility. Uh, it, it would be just like if we were landfilling full time. There's a, the same cost whether you're burying 300 ton a day or a thousand ton, a thousand ton a day. That's on the landfill side. So really, the only thing we can see cost wise is if, like I said, if there's less tonnage coming in, yes, the transfer cost would go down. But we'd be losing the overall revenue per ton, you know, that, that takes care of everything else. If you are talking about, you know, different services at the facility, uh, you know, it's a different conversation, but, and I can tell you, we'll probably have these conversations during the budget cycle or budget review. Uh, but we operate two to three people down against what we should be operating in anyway. So, um, I'll, we'll, then again, conversation for another day. But from, again, from a service standpoint, there's really nothing there that we can eliminate, uh, that we're not required to do.
And the other facility does not take recycling. That's here in the county. So all that would be 100% on us as it is now.
They also take very little construction demolition material. So that's something that we still need an outlet for as well.
But we could have a, a joint venture with some outside firm to take that for us and take it off our backs, correct?
That, that's what we currently have a contract for. Our contract is pretty much mirroring what the third party is.
Yeah, we did it with Mulch. We can do that with a lot of this stuff and, uh, take the cost away from us. Anyway. Let's think about it. Where couldn't we?
Right. And that's coming to us soon as the cost, we, we've been able to renegotiate and work some deals, but pretty soon Mulch will eventually be costing. There'll be a fee that bill will be coming in because we can't, oh, we can't balance that forever at the rate of inflation.
Right. Similar to our transfer, um, agreement, we, we do have agreements with other organizations and they do take those kinds of trash already. So, um, so the, I mean, barring renegotiating those agreements to benefit the county better, they're, that we're already entered into those kinds of agreements with others.
Yeah, knowing those agreements and having further discussion on them, I still think we need the basics. And some of the basics we just don't have at this point. So if we can get that, then we can also look at other options on how to, like you said, joint venture, partner, or take advantage of other projects or programs that are out there. But right now, there's still the basic fundamental services that we don't understand. You know, we have a, a feel for it, but I think we need some numbers in front of us as we, as we discussed, okay? Anything else? For the group, this was a great conversation. Really appreciate Cliff, Eric and Jeff. You know, the, the work that you're doing in, uh, prepping this and look forward to following up with, uh, you know, further discussion and then hopefully, well, not hopefully, but, uh, intent on making a decision at that point, so.
And one, one last little thing that Commissioner Boucher was saying, you know, if it, if it sounds too good to be true. Uh, again, we've mentioned before, multiple, multiple counties in, in the state have a system benefit charge or something equal. Uh, I don't know that everybody would have that if, if there wasn't a benefit to it. Uh, I do understand his position. I understand, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the question and the concern. Uh, but it, it, it is something, depending on how it's set up, does work again differently in every, every community. But we will, uh, we'll get that information together also on what the exact details of what the other counties do. And maybe that will help show what the value is or this program can have, uh, at our level as well.
Okay. Cliff, Eric and Jeff, I think you guys did a wonderful job. I'm a little bit tough on people once in a while, but we're all adults and I absolutely love the debate. And I thrive for debate. It makes us all think deeper. Maybe in the end you'll convince me otherwise, but it's important to be challenging because when we challenge you guys and my colleagues and I challenge one another, we get deeper into these issues and come out with a better solution. I think that's ultimately what we all mutually are looking for. So don't take offense to me. I love all you guys. I appreciate what you're doing. So thank you very much.
And we, I appreciate, I'm sure we all appreciate the, the back and forth. It's, it's very beneficial.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the group? Seeing, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I got a motion to adjourn a second.
Second.
A second.
No, I don't know.
Do I have a second? Who, nobody wants a second to adjourn?
A second.
We got a second. Okay, we'll back, uh, four to one.
And Weaver, you can stay on.
Do you have something to say there, Commissioner Vance? Okay, we are adjourned.